Good evening and welcome to the August 5th, 2024 special meeting of the Akron Public School Board. Roll call please, Dr. Thompson.
Mr. Alexander.
Present.
Ms. Autry.
Present.
Ms. Hall.
Present.
Mr. Perry.
I am here.
Mrs. Sykes.
Present.
Five present, two absent.
Thank you, and if you are able to rise, please do so for the pledge of allegiance. Uh, member Perry, would you mind leading us?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and we do have a few requests to address the board this evening. And so as we call up our first, uh, person, I just want to remind everyone that you are limited to three minutes. Please dress all your comments to the chair. All items will be directed to the superintendent to be followed up upon. And our next, our first person is Brenda Frame.
Hi. My name's Brenda Frame, and I appreciate you guys allowing me to speak to you again this week. Um, each of you have in your folder a copy of what I'm looking at. Uh, this is just a, a PowerPoint presentation, more or less, that was prepared. Uh, for information for you guys that maybe, uh, you didn't know, maybe we needed figures put right in front of us. Uh, uh, if you look at the first page, of course, it's achieving operational excellence with independent contractor operators. And I understand you guys have been told basically that we are not, uh, efficient, but we are, have been for over 50 years. Uh, if something isn't broke, why are you trying to fix it, especially when you're trying to fix it for somebody or with somebody who is quite a bit more expensive than we are? Um, payroll, it was said that, uh, took 80 hours to, uh, do our payroll and verify all our facts. We confirmed that the transportation staff only requires 20 hours. We also confirmed that accounts payable only require 16 hours, that's 36 hours. Uh, we are still invoicing by pen and paper, and, uh, we are using an antiquated system, transportation is. There's 1,200 students, uh, and, um, they will be processed either way. Whether by us or by a company, it's processed the same way. Uh, you still use your payroll, and, uh, so it's not like that's saving any money. Um, routing, so one time annually, uh, logistics is prepared by the transportation department for the ICOs. After that, when the students come out, we're the ones that decide whether or not they'll fit on our routes. Uh, that isn't something, uh, that you guys do for us, or I'm sorry, not you guys, but the transportation department. That's not something that they do for us. They put out the list and we grab them and add them to our routes. And we do try to take all the students, sometimes it's not possible, uh, but we are really good at working together. Trading children on our routes at schools, whatever. We are good about making sure that we get all these kids to school. Um, on average, we drive two to three routes, which is a minimum of 12 to 23 students. I've driven as many as 29, so it isn't that we're not trying to get these kids to school. We do in fact get them to school. Um, our routes can change continually based on students moving, their behavior. Rental complaints about the companies, last year, we got a lot of complaints from parents about, uh, particular drivers that worked for companies that they weren't happy with. Um, hiring another 20 drivers will accommodate another 220 students. Um, also APS has never been fined for non-compliance while using the ICOs. We have been compliant with Bill 33 over the last 53 years.
Thank you, Ms. Frame, that is time.
Thank you.
Next, we have Natalie Carmack.
I'm just gonna finish left off, or finish where my fellow van driver left off. Um, certification, we have to apply for certification to drive. Uh, transportation runs the driving aspect, we take a written and driving test, fingerprints paid for by the ICOs, us. Physicals paid for the dri- by the drivers. We have to have a certified mechanic, um, for our vehicle inspection also paid by us. We have to provide proof of insurance, also paid by us. And the final vehicle inspection is signed off by spokespeople. Um, no formal training is given, not extensive as what was presented to you, uh, before. ICOs versus companies, um, and we're going at the 23, 24 school year. ICOs projected number of children transported was 1,200, 143 plus 20 new drivers with a projection of pay at 3.7 million. ICOs transported 1,086 children, paid 3.6 million. ICOs and Templeton, the projected number of children would be 1,200 with ICOs doing the majority. Number of drivers unknown, projection of pay 4.4 million. Company transported 151, children paid for 3.4 million. ICOs, KBT and UTC, with KBT and UTC getting the bulk of that money. 1,200 with ICOs doing the majority, number of drivers and projection of pay. This honestly would be so much easier if either you were following on a PowerPoint or had the information right out in front of you, but reading it from something like this is very difficult to get my point across, but since I have a minute remaining, I also wanted to tell you. Oh, I'm sorry, I have it on my phone. The main thing that I would like to say is that Akron Public Schools has a hiring problem with the people that they hire. As far as the supervisor for the van transportation department. And the reason that I say that is because previous managers dating back, what, 53 years that we've been driving, have handled it without problem, without incident until two years ago, when our previous manager retired. If they were able to get a person in there trained properly, the way the other two were, we wouldn't even be having this discussion right now, because everything would be going the way that I believe APS meant it to go, which means responsible drivers, not only hiring from the community, but also what they paid us, because we are definitely the less expensive option than any company out there. And we, like we've said many times before, we have a vested interest in the students and in the community. And APS knows that because they had it working, it worked great up until two years ago. What changed? The people.
Thank you, Ms. Carmack. That is time. Next is Jasmine Wadud.
Dear members of the board, I address you as a certified vendor, ICO driver, and a dedicated member and stakeholder of our community. First and foremost, I must highlight the inappropriateness of attempting to renew a contract that never included a renewal clause. The action raises significant ethical and procedural questions, particularly in light of the act that the companies involved have a documented history within a very short period of time of violating regulations crucial to child safety. These companies suggested by Business Affairs have presented severe conflicts of interest as their original contract was obtained through the misconduct of previous staff. Such violations run counter to the district's commitment to maintaining a safe and nurturing environment for our students. Moreover, the transportation department's continued disregard for taking appropriate action with our certified ICO vendors, as it does with other vendors, undermines the district's goals of operational excellence. It is the district's policy that all service providers should be held to the same standards, and the lack of consistent oversight for ICO certified vendors creates an imbalance that ultimately affects the quality of service the district can provide. It's come to our attention that Business Affairs Department is attempting to sidestep established board policy. For example, in the seven, eight board meeting, Thomas Limo had been added to the resolution after already receiving an approval and resolutions that were associated with the June 2024 board meeting. This most recent regular solution categorized as unfinished business is inappropriate. It's concerning, particularly since this particular resolution was never formally placed on the agenda in the first place to be reconsidered or renewed. This procedural oversight not only questions the transparency of the process, but also raises doubts about the integrity of the decision-making framework that is in place. Additionally, the language used in most recent resolutions by the Business Affairs Department is inappropriate and may mislead the board and stakeholders into believing that the district is in compliance with certified ICO vendors. In reality, the attempt to add vendors that have previously been denied raises compliance issues. Despite these challenges, it is important to note that we, the certified ICO vendors, have responded promptly to calls for action. We've demonstrated our commitment by communicating our operational plan, plans and readiness to meet the district's needs and continue serving our community effectively as the cheapest, most responsive and most responsible vendors. Our coalition of certified ICO vendors stand ready to work collaboratively with the transportation department and the school board to ensure that we can continue to provide safe, reliable services to our most vulnerable students. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Wadud. Next we have Pastor Harrison.
Good morning, board, uh, or good evening. Wanted to speak briefly about the levy, um, and contracts. And want to say that, um, $318 per 100,000 may not seem like a lot, but it depends on your zip code how much $318 is. And it may not seem, um, like a bad investment, but it becomes a bad investment when we come here time after time to talk about the same issues, contracts. Take about, talk about the same issue, the use of the school buildings. Talk about the same issues, equity. Talk about the same issues. And when I watched the board meeting, especially the last couple of board meetings, it's concerning that the things that we continue to talk about, contracts, and how they're awarded, contracts and how they're established, contracts, the building use, contracts. We continue to say the same thing, and it may be a different subject, and today we're talking about van drivers and transportation, but Business Affairs Office is an issue. And I've talked to different board members collectively, individually, uh, and we continue to say the same thing, and we continue to hear, yeah, we know it's a problem. But at what point do we address the actual issue? Transportation is important, but when we say it's for the kids' welfare, anytime we continue to do something and then it becomes an emergency. When we're talking about laws, when we're talking about house bills, and then we as public, we look up those laws and house bills and we see they don't apply. Um, it is my, um, intent, and I told our congregation yesterday, that we will have forums, we will have at least four forums on issue, whatever issue it is for the levy, whatever issue number it is. Uh, I want to support the children, but I refuse to support this type of governance, this type of, uh, I don't want to say anything that would say something is illegal, but it's certainly not in the best interest of students to not be fair with contracts. And if you are going to handle money, you're going to ask for more money, then you have to show us that you have been responsible with the money that you already have. Not having a levy in 11 or 12 years does not mean that everything over the last 12 years was done correctly. We continue to come to the board and ask for change. Three times we get a chance to speak, we get three minutes at a board meeting. We continue, we can vote for school m- board members, and we can vote for a levy. Two times you have not heard me, and I'm asking before the third time that you listen and make a change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Next is Robert Lyons.
The board, thank you. We are, uh, not going anywhere. We're voters. We vote, we pay attention. We got a couple of people there thinking about running for the school board. If school was to start tomorrow, you have 143 drivers ready to drive. Not one of your kids, some of the most at-risk, especially special needs kids, would not get to school. We've been compliant, and we've been working with outraces. Those are the facts. This school board probably has been educated, that's a good word to say, since I don't have my high school diploma, but you guys do, about what it takes to do what we do. You've heard us talk about our expenses, and we're watching, and so the Akron School Board, we ask you to pay attention and make an informed decision. We're ready to go to work tomorrow. When the levy, I mean, the, uh, COVID hit, we were still ready. We still delivered lunches to a lot of the, the parents, a lot of the kids that couldn't get here to eat. When they opened up the schools, and, uh, prior school board at that time was under duress, didn't want to open the schools, but they were forced to. We were watching, they called us and said, be ready in two weeks. We were ready. When they give us these routes, we look at the phone numbers, we look at the addresses, we run the routes. We go out and meet the kids, we meet the parents, so we know what we're dealing with. Lot of bad phone numbers, lot of bad people got moved where you have bad information or bad addresses. You know who does that? We do. And I'm gonna give a shout out to the secretaries of every school that's in APS, because those secretaries are gatekeepers for you guys. They give us the information so that we can get ahold of the parents, so that kid can get to school. So the same commitment that the administration is saying that they need to be compliant with, we back that up, because we go out there and do the hard work every day, talking to each and every parent to make sure these kids get to school, make an informed decision. If you don't make any decision today, the kids are gonna get to school no matter what, because we're gonna show up. And I did run a summer route too, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Next is Andrea Morton.
Hello. I understand that payroll, logistics and compliance have been presented as the driving force behind the need for an outside company. But is this really the safest, most responsible, financially responsible option for students and the taxpayers? For 50 years, as you guys have heard over and over, we've done this, we've been proven, there's no question. But I want to talk about being ethical for a moment. As a licensed realtor for just under 20 years, I must adhere to a strict code of ethics. But maybe a lot of people don't know what ethics is. In short, it's demonstrating truthful, fair and honest behavior. Please ask yourselves the following. Why wouldn't the transportation coordinator simply encourage Brandy, somebody that he's relied on since he started the position? Somebody that's basically running transportation as far as the van drivers are concerned? Why wouldn't he just tell her, you know, hey, we, what we really want from you guys is to, uh, what is it? Apply for the RFP. Again, keep in mind, he comes to her about any and everything concerning transportation. I mean, just speaking from an ethical standpoint, right? Why wouldn't the Director of Business Affairs encourage the same? During the meeting on September 9th, when we pled with her to give us some type of guidance, we asked if EIN numbers were necessary, and we were told no. That would have been a perfect opportunity to say, hey, you know what, guys? Form a company, apply for the RFP. It's that simple. But again, ethically speaking, right? Why wouldn't this take place? Both individuals mentioned above were also asked repeatedly by various ICOs the status of their jobs, and again, we were ignored or misled into thinking, our jobs are fine. That is why none of us applied for the RFP or submitted a proposal. What's the driving force behind keeping this a secret from a group of individuals who have dedicated themselves to this district for over 50 years? Just to hire a company, pay them a ridiculous amount of money to do less work? How does APS plan to regulate who's driving for these companies? That's the question you should ask yourselves. Are we just trusting that this company with, with an LLC just formed, what, yesterday or six months ago or two years ago? Is it really worth taking a gamble with these children's lives, with these children's livelihood just because payroll says, oh, it takes me too long? They've been doing it all this time. It's only been made a problem because the previous, um, transportation staff who have all resigned, I'll keep saying that, they resigned for a reason, they made it a problem. resigned, I'll keep saying that, they resigned for a reason, they made it a problem. It's not really a problem. It doesn't make sense, guys.
Operational efficiency and a blueprint for excellence does not come with false perceptions, deceit, disrespect, nor retaliation, and that's all this administration has shown the van drivers. Every board meeting, administration has told you guys that they're going to have a meeting with us, yet every time we come stand here and talk to you guys, we tell you we have not been met with. One non informational, yet labeled informational meeting, no other communication, no transparency, and 10 days before a scheduled route pick, no contract. We know no more today than we did from the very first time we came here. If administration would just communicate with us, they know that we don't want to come here and just present problems. We have solutions as well, but it takes an actual conversation. We have solutions to payroll, logistics, and we have a structured system to resolve the issues of dealing with 140 independent contractors, but they don't know because they don't talk to us. Payroll and logistics, it's not a reason to overspend by millions, especially when you have a viable option. We, the ICOs, who are, by the way, certified vendors, are the lowest, most responsive, most responsible choice. Transportation posted an advertisement to hire van drivers on 7/24. Within 48 hours, they had 15 applicants. Hiring 15 drivers allows 220 additional students to be transported, and that is 60 more students than the two companies combined transported last year, at a fraction of the cost. No matter which company you go with, if you guys choose to go with a company, you stand to spend $1 to $4 million more dollars than you would by choosing all ICOs. The problems presented to you are null and void. Administration got up here and spoke on if they were noncompliant, what would happen. But again, after the long speech about noncompliance, the real question was answered, and that is, in the 50-plus years that we have been doing this job, APS has never been noncompliant. No companies involved, simply all drivers kept this district in compliance with state laws. Why would you want to spend 7.5 or 5.7 million when you could spend 3.7 and have all the district's needs covered? When you're asking the community to support a levy that will bring APS 27 million annually, the goal should be to show taxpayers that you are willing to do everything possible to make the most financially responsible decision. I believe the students of APS deserve support with this levy, but to gain community support, it's time that APS shows a good faith effort and do right by those who have been nothing but loyal to them. Us van drivers, we had less than two weeks' notice to come back during COVID. We did it. We pulled together, we got every kid transported in a timely fashion. Every day these last two years, knowing we were being underpaid and undervalued, we still adhere to our contracts and showed up and did our jobs, and that is why we deserve to be the only people who transport these kids. If you ask our families, our APS families, what their preference is, I can guarantee you that they choose the van drivers, that they have known to grow, love, and consider parts of their family as well for over the last 50 years.
Next, we will have a presentation on Transportation Support Services. Dr. Robinson.
Thank you, President Autry. Our Chief of Staff is coming.
Good afternoon, Board. Board President Autry. My name is Angela Carter, Chief of Staff, and I am here to present on Transportation Support Services, just making sure that we keep our focus on our students as relates to our mission and our vision, and just remembering why we're here. And then knowing that everything that we do is connected to our Blueprint for Excellence, specifically today, we're talking about operational excellence as relates to looking at how we will make sure that our students who qualify for transportation under McKinnon veto and Special Education Services are able to be transported to school each and every day. So what we're going to do is just go through a quick timeline of what has occurred up to where we are right now. So June 24th, the Board rejected a recommendation to enter into a service agreement with Templeton Transportation LLC. This agreement would have been for one year with an option for additional years at the same rates. Templeton was chosen as the lowest, most responsive and responsible proposer through the RFP process. That was June 24th. July 22nd, board meeting. During this board meeting, the Board tabled a revised recommendation for a one-year contract with Templeton Transportation LLC. The Board also authorized the use of independent contract operators. So we will be utilizing, and we are reaching out to look for more independent contract operators for transporting special education students and those who qualify under McKinnon veto Homeless Assistance Act. This time, Templeton was proposed to supplement, as well as utilizing our independent contract So where are we in the process? We want to, currently, we need to address three key issues: Resolve the motion to table the Templeton Transportation Service Agreement, and then also resolve the open RFP and ensure all transportation needs are met.
Good evening, Board members. Diana Fiedler with Retzland Andress, Council for the Board. I was, I'm helping Ms. Angela here with her presentation and asked to advise on the legal analysis for this RFP process to date, and I just wanted to inform the Board again that all proper legal channels and procedures were followed as part of the van transportation RFP process, that the recommendations on the agenda for this evening are in good order, and that the Board is able to move forward with accepting the, should the Board choose to take from the table, the pending Templeton Transportation LLC agreement, that they are within their bounds to go ahead and do that and vote accordingly. And then if that vote is a no, they are within their legal bounds to, at this time, reject all bids under the RFP, and then to move forward with considering a recommendation to extend existing serving, service contracts to ensure that there is a full suite of van transportation options for the school year to maintain compliance with the Ohio Department of Education.
So now, we're going to talk about our transportation needs. So for the 24-25 school year, we anticipate a minimum of 1,200 students, resulting in approximately 170 to 200 routes for the 24-25 school year, but currently, we only have 112 independent contract operators ready to go. So we will need approved vendors to cover routes for our students who qualify under McKinnon veto and Special Education Services, due to ensuring that all of our transportation services are met for all of our students who qualify for these services. Just as a reminder, House Bill 33 outlines potential funding withholding for our noncompliance with transportation. Penalties escalate from a correction action plan to withholding 25% of daily transportation funding, and ultimately, to 100% withholding for repeated noncompliance. So we never want to find ourselves in that situation. Therefore, we're going to continue to problem solve and figure out how we can make sure that we're getting our students to and from school each and every day. So, the options that we have right now, we have three options: Approve Templeton Transportation LLC as the lowest responsive and responsible bid, or reject all bids under the RFP, reissue an RFP for the 25-26 school year for van transportation services, and then extend the current agreement that we have with the vendors we utilized last school year. Rejecting all bids would leave us without a vendor to supplement ICOs, risking noncompliance. There's not enough time for us to renew an RFP right now for this current school year. If we reject all proposals, we'd recommend extending an existing van transportation vendor agreement for one year at the current rates. Therefore, our recommendation is to take from the table, because right now it's tabled, the one-year agreement with Templeton LLC. This allows time to reissue an RFP for the 25-26 school year, it ensures compliance, and is cost-effective. If rejected, we suggest passing a resolution to reject all bids and extend services with existing vendors for the 24-25 school year. If we were to, once you decide whether or not you want to, if you decide you want to go with utilizing our independent contract operators, which we already know we're going to be utilizing our independent contract operators, and then supplementing that with utilizing Templeton Transportation LLC, we anticipate an estimated amount of 4.4 million. If we reject the RFP, then we are looking at extending our current contract, which would leave us at 7.1 million. And that concludes our presentation for today, and just wanted to know if you had any questions.
Thank you, Chief of Staff. Are there any questions? Mr. Alexander.
Yes, I just want to make sure that I'm clear on everything, too. So what we're saying today, if we, let me back up, first of all, we're going to use the ICOs, and we would need an overflow company to transport?
Correct.
Okay. So if we reject all the contracts, I mean, we have to start over again? Is that correct?
If we reject the RFP, we would start the RFP process over, but it wouldn't be for the, it wouldn't be until the 25-26 school year, because we don't have enough time this school year to put another RFP out.
Okay. So we need to, basically, we need to use the ICOs and possibly Templeton and get through this year and then work on next year. Is that correct?
If that's the pleasure of the Board, that is correct, Mr. Bruce.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Mr. Perry.
So I did hear some consternation in the audience about the 112 number for the ICOs.
Yes.
How was that number come to, and is it accurate?
That is accurate based on the number of people who have gotten all their paperwork and everything they need to do to be able to drive. Is that correct, Mr. Miller?
That is correct.
Okay, so 112, and we think we need, how many approximately? How many more than that?
We hope to have at least, I think, 100 and, how many, are we looking to get, at least 170?
Last year, we were in the upper 130s for ICOs, and we had a supplemental vendor as well.
Okay.
Right now, the number of ICOs that have turned in all their paperwork and are ready to go today is 112.
Okay, okay.
And then, hold on one second, I can't hear because of the talking, but if you could just repeat what you were saying, Mr. Miller, can you come up here?
So, yeah, last year, we had over 130 ICOs, and we also had a supplemental vendor to help with van service. Currently, right now, we have 112 ICOs that have turned in all of their paperwork that are ready to go today, and their van route pick is next Thursday.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Ms. Hall. Go ahead.
Go ahead. I would ask one.
Follow up, do your follow up.
Okay, so, yeah, so if we just use ICOs, is it an option to use ICOs and no supplement?
That is, that is an option, but right, I mean, it's an, it's an option to use just independent contract operators, but right now, we know currently, we don't have enough.
Got it, okay.
Ms. Hall.
Thank you.
Please be respectful in the audience so that everyone can hear.
Thank you, President Autry. So, I guess I was hearing, is there still, is there a deadline for ICOs to, or is it done? Is it 112, and that's it?
No, there's no deadline. We're still accepting, we're still taking applications for new.
Okay.
And then we've, we've also sent emails out to all of the ICOs from last year that still are missing paperwork to let them know, and currently, we have 112.
So 112 is ready to go. Okay. And then, Templeton, how many drivers does Templeton currently have? And would they be able to take on everyone?
Everyone, as in?
All the students. I mean, because if we're looking at Templeton, so we're saying we have 112 ICOs.
Correct.
How many drivers does Templeton have?
I don't know what's on their payroll currently, right now.
Okay.
We haven't, we haven't been in contact with her since the June meeting. As far as finding out how many drivers and ramping up and all of that, because we don't have an approved, they're not an approved vendor at this time.
Okay, because I thought at our last meeting, we had talked about ICOs and Templeton. ICOs would take 1,200 kids, Templeton would take?
On the, at the last board meeting, the two...
So I don't have that paperwork with me.
Oh, no, you're fine. It's confusing, because we've been talking about it a lot, so I completely understand. So the first thing that we said was, we wanted to utilize independent contract operators as well as Templeton, and then the other option was just using Templeton solely, with them being able to hire some of the independent contract operators that have contracted with Akron Public Schools. So, and, but that was, that was voted down on the, in the, for the June meeting. No, July meeting, I'm sorry. That was voted down for July meeting.
Can I have a follow up? Okay, right.
Oh, it was June.
So I guess my question is, you haven't talked to Templeton, but we're looking at ICOs and Templeton. How do we know that Templeton will have the capability to take the additional students? If we're asking for both companies, we're saying, let's do ICOs and Templeton, if we have 112 ICOs, and say, we don't get any more, right? Is Templeton ready and equipped to pick up the rest? Or if not, once we say yes, we want to approve this, and they say, no, we don't have enough drivers, then what?
Then, well, we're going to be actively recruiting independent contract operators, but I know that she also will probably need to recruit based on, I don't know how many drivers she currently has, and I know that a lot of people don't hire people unless they know for sure they're going to have work for them. So I can't really speak to specifically how many people she has unless Mr. Leonard or Mr. Miller, do you know?
Mr. Leonard can talk about the RFP.
Yeah, because I'm thinking like, the RFP should have stated like, how many drivers she had, or how many vehicles.
With the, with the RFP, they had to have 10 vans to start, to even apply for it.
What about drivers? Is it just 10 vehicles?
We don't, we don't get into what they, as long as they have the required.
Okay.
Because they could have 50 drivers driving 10 vans, or they could have 10 drivers driving 10 vans. That, we don't know. We wouldn't know that for anybody. We just ask for a certain number of vans, which I'll let him explain through the RFP, and they have to ensure, because once they sign a contract with us, they're signing a contract that they can do that work.
I know, that's why, because we're, you know, just being responsive, you know, making sure that, what if they don't have what we need, so then we go out and recruit more ICOs?
We would, I think our ICO recruitment is ongoing. We would go, if Templeton said, oh, I can supply a part of it, but not all, we have a, another valid proposal that we would go to the next vendor and the next vendor. So we would, we would, if needed, we would search other vendors to...
So that's more money, right? Just like, more money if we don't have...
Well, they cost more than Templeton, that is correct.
Okay.
If I could just make a point of clarification, the RFP, from purely legal standpoint, listed what was required, they responded. We are bound to stay within the confines of what the RFP stated, what their response stated, and then the contract. And that's, when we enter into the contract, it is on the representations that they made in their response to the RFP. There is no going down the list to any other vendors in the RFP process. Once the lowest and responsive is determined, that is the person or the entity that would get the contract. If not them, reject all of them and come up with a Plan B.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Chair, members of the Board. So, this Board has already rejected... So, this board has already rejected Templeton. Now, I hear from the attorney that once it has been determined that they are the lowest and the most responsive, that was by the administration, not this board. This board has the authority, only this board, the elected members, to determine whether or not it's the lowest and the most responsive, not the administration. So we rejected, we rejected, this board rejected. And I asked the same question, why are we even discussing this again? Because this board has already rejected this. This board. Now, the administration could disagree with this board, but the difference between the administration and this board is that we are the elected members. They are not the elected members. So therefore, you have not, we have not determined that it is the best and the lowest and the most responsive. I brought this up before. I really did not want to have this discussion again. I said to my colleagues, I'm not going to say a word. But, yeah, I am unable to hold to that. I am just unable to hold to that. And as we heard from one of our speakers today, this is coming down to more than just van drivers. This is coming down to trust. This is coming down to whether or not they believe what we are saying. And at this point, we are in a very precarious situation. I understand, as I heard from the Chief of Staff, that if we do not do what we're asked to do, then that means that we would be under a penalty. I understand that, and I don't want that. But who's responsible for that? This administration knew more than a year ago when the children would have to be transported, but yet, here we find ourselves without an adequate recommendation from the administration. And I am not saying it is clearly any individual problem, but I am saying it is a systematic problem. If, if we put out a request for proposals, there are questions and concerns from our community, and it just sends everything in her way. That means that the whole system, there is an issue within our system that we are not handling this properly. And at this point, we do not have an adequate recommendation from the administration, because that's the administration's job, to bring to this board adequate recommendations. And again, we have not, this board has not determined the lowest and the most responsive, because this board rejected the administration decision.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, Mr. Alexander?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up. I was hearing numbers, because I wasn't at the last meeting, but we're saying there's 112 ICOs that were already approved, correct? Is that correct?
That have, that are-
Plead their paperwork?
Correct.
Okay.
That are ready to go right now, today.
Okay, and so we still need, how many more kids, I guess, how many more to, to-
We're, we're hoping to get at least 200.
200.
So 100, let me go to that slide, it's on my paper. So we're hoping to get at least 170, I'm sorry. We anticipate 170 to 200 routes, and so we would need enough drivers to cover all of the routes. And we know that some of those routes are tiered, but you have to remember, too, that some of our students are driven by, like, it may be one student that's being taken out of district, that's a route. And so that is another, like, driver, too, because you have to think about time. There's, it's a layered system as relates to transportation, and so just making sure all the needs are met as it relates to getting our kids to and from school. I believe that's why we're looking at utilizing a vendor as well, in case we don't have enough independent contract operators.
Okay.
Leonard.
So we still need-
Oh, Justin.
So we would still need additional, we're saying we're always, we're going to need additional drivers, period. I, I'm just trying to figure all this out myself, too, that we have, I heard the number 112, but we need more than that. We've, I'm also hearing that we did not approve Templeton, so we're putting Templeton back on the table, per se? Am I correct? I'm just trying to get-
So from a procedural standpoint, Templeton was the lowest and most responsive bidder, based on the internal committee to review them, based on the RFP specifications. They were lowest and most responsive. They then are offered the contract because they were lowest and most responsive under the RFP process.
Right.
Those are the rules. That was put up for a, up to a three-year contract, was voted down, then, that was determined, voted down, but then there was an additional recommendation made at the last meeting for just a one-year contract, because there was also the approval to utilize the ICOs as well. So the proposal looks such that there's ICOs being utilized, and then the lowest and most responsive bidder being used to supplement the ICOs, to ensure that there's always enough drivers to make sure that we're in compliance with Ohio Department of Education. And so that was the recommendation that was tabled at the last meeting.
So it was tabled for us to make a decision whether to use Templeton or not use Templeton?
To use Templeton for one year.
Okay, for one year?
Mm-hmm.
Madam Chair, may I ask an attorney a question?
Is there any other discussion?
Go ahead.
Who offered Templeton the contract?
No one has.
You just stated that Templeton was offered the contract because they was the lowest and most responsive. Who offered that contract to them?
I'm saying that the contract, based on the RFP specifications, the contract is offered, it should be awarded, the recommendation to award the contract should go to the lowest and most responsible bidder.
If the board agrees.
The board needs to vote on the contract.
That's right. So the board has not agreed. The board did not. The board rejected. Therefore, there is not a contract to offer Templeton. Let me be the first to say, I am not an attorney. However, the, the board makes the final decision, and I would think that when you put the RFP out, the word was, under the approval, after the approval of the board, was, was there some language in there someplace that says that? Depending upon the approval of the board. The board rejected the recommendation. So the board has not approved Templeton. And as I said before, that was not a, that, the board, the staff did not come in and ask for reconsideration of the rejection, and I understand that perhaps that is not a legal, that is not a legal terminology, but it is a rules within our rules. That says that if we reject a contract, if we reject an item and order for it to come back to this board exactly as it came, and I asked last time we met, was this the exact proposal? And I was told by the Chief of Staff and the Superintendent, it was the exact proposal. Now I hear that maybe it's not the exact proposal, that the one before was one year with two years' option.
Three years.
Three years' option, and this is now one year with no year option. So therefore, it was not the exact proposal. So, listen, let's not play games here. It's the same proposal. It's the same proposal, and this is what we don't want to do to our community. We want our community to believe us, to trust us. So you want to come in now and say, and when did we talk to Templeton to say that Templeton would agree to one year without a two-year extension? When did we talk to Templeton? Since, I heard that we hadn't talked to Templeton, we meaning, since June. When did that conversation take place?
Mrs., excuse me, Mrs. Sykes. The-
So what I see, I, I'm not yielding the floor, I have the floor, Mr. Superintendent. So what I see you telling me now is that what you're proposing now is just like a distinction without a difference. That's what I hear. It is a distinction without a difference. So it is the same proposal that's coming before this board, that you brought before, but you would have us to believe that it's not, which is why it could be on this agenda. It is out of order. It was out of order when you brought it in last week. It is out of order this week. And if we don't follow our rules, we find ourselves doing what? This, this administration is the rule enforcer. How many times have we gotten calls from parents that said, because of your rule, my child has been put out of school? Because of your rule, my child has been going to, has to go to another school? But yet, you are not willing to follow this board rules, when you are the rule enforcers? So we are affecting our children every day, sending them to suspension because of our rules, putting them out of school because of our rule, all types of things. And you, as teachers and administrators, would be the first to say, what? You must follow the rules, because if we don't have rule, we have no order. If we don't have order, we have no system. But yet, you would expect for us, the board, not to follow our own rules, and for you to come in and tell us that what we rejected was actually not a rejection, because instead of one year with two options, now it's just one year and no option. Stop doing this. Stop insulting our community members and our taxpayers' intelligence. Stop, stop insulting this board. Madam Chair, I am complete.
Thank you. Mr. Superintendent.
So, Mrs. Sykes, the last time that this proposal was, and board members, the last time that this was brought to the board, I spoke with Templeton for clarification, which I am allowed to do, because I wanted to make sure that what I was hearing at board meetings is what, in effect, was said by her. So I said to her at that time that this is only going to be a temporary thing if the board approves it. So when it was brought the second time, it was not with three-year option. It was only for asking for one year to work along with the ICOs to support, to supplement the ICOs. And if the board approved it, it would only be one year, then we would start a whole new RFP process to, for the 25-26 school year. But we wouldn't be able to do it for this year because of the timing. So I just wanted to make that clarification. When Ms. Carter spoke, it was not the same, at the last one I brought, it was not for three years, it was only for one year, that I was asking for us to use Templeton along with the ICOs. So I just wanted to make that clarification.
Madam President, may I respond?
Member Sykes.
Thank you. Mr. Superintendent, that was my concern, is that someone was speaking to Templeton and not speaking to the other vendors, because we have an open PO. That is the concern. And when, when this administration determined that this is the best, this is the best, because it's the cheapest, well, we say it's the, at least, the lowest and the most responsive. That's what the administration determined. But when we rejected that, then for you to go back and to talk to Templeton and not talk to the other vendors, to see if they, if you could negotiate something with them, then I say that is not, that is inappropriate and unfair.
I was not allowed to, based on, I hear what you're saying, but based on what our RFP process, the, our policy of the, our legal, legal advice determined, I was not able to do that. I'm following what was given to me. So it isn't that someone is trying to do anything illegal, or lying to the public or to the board. I'm coming to you in full transparency of what it is that we have been doing. If that is your interpretation, I certainly am sorry about that, but that is not at all what we've been doing, nor is that what our intentions was. When I, after the, that was after the first meeting, and it was not my understanding that it was rejected, that's why I asked, could we use them with the ICOs and not just Templeton by itself, or any company by itself? That's why I brought it back, asking, could we do that for just one year? And so it was tabled at the last meeting. So we would need to clear that up here, so that we then can reject all the bids, and then we could, we would be recommending and asking, could we just go back with what we did this past year for this year, and then start a new RFP process for the 25-26 school year?
Madam President, may I respond?
Thank you. Member Sykes.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. I, I, I'm shocked that you did not understand that when we, perhaps we need the parliamentarian to read what happened at the, at the meeting, that when we voted to accept all of the recommendations from the Business Department, except Templeton, then I don't know what that would mean, if not rejection. What would be another term that we would use, other than rejection? I, I'm serious. I'm trying to find out, how is it that the administration did not understand that this board had rejected Penleton, Templeton? And I don't even like using this company's name, because I think it's unfair to have their names out here. But you ought to use it. So that's the only way I know how to reference to them. So was it that the administration just disregarded our vote? Was that what was happening, that you just disregarded it? That we didn't understand what we were doing by rejecting them, and you were going to come in with a better solution and explain to us what we did, because we didn't understand? Is that what happened?
That is correct.
You think that we did not, the board did not understand what we were doing?
No, I thought you said that we mean-
No, I'm saying we, when I say we, I'm, I'm with the board. I'm, I'm an elected official, I'm not with the staff. So when the board voted to reject Templeton, did the administration feel that we really didn't understand what we were doing, and so that's why you came in with a new proposal?
No, I said that I understood. That's what we understood. That's why I worked with the attorney on bringing back another solution, using the ICOs.
But you only talked to one of the vendors. Now, so you would have been asked tonight to close, to close the, to close this whole process. And why are we being asked, why are we being asked to close this whole process? Because the process is still open, because the other vendors that participated in this process still have some rights here. That's why we've been asked to close. Or maybe my interpretation's wrong, because I'm not an attorney.
Attorney Fidel.
Oh, just to reiterate what I stated before, there is still an open RFP process. Under our RFP, the lowest and most responsive bidder is, offered the contract based on that decision, and then if that lowest and most responsive isn't accepted, then it would be a rejection of all bids, and those are the two things that are on the table this evening.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Yes, Madam President, I'm sorry. I don't want to ask too many questions, but I want to be clear. So when we rejected that, I know we rejected that in, in past board meetings. So the last board meeting, that was brought back again, is that what I'm gathering, that was brought back again for us to say, okay, do we want to use the other company and the ICOs? And so it was tabled. Therefore, since it was tabled, then we need to get it off the table to make a new vote tonight, either vote for all ICOs, or vote for ICOs and another company, and that's it, because it sounds like, from what I'm gathering, we don't have enough people to transport, and I don't want us to get in the point, I'm just, I'm going to talk for me. Right now, I don't want us to get in a position where we get money taken away from, and we need money already. So for me, I'm saying me, Bruce Alexander, that I don't want to see that happening. So we need to make some type of decision tonight, whether we're going, whether it be a yay for one, or yay for the other, or a combination. So I, I just want to make sure it's clear, because it sounds like we're getting one thing off the table, bringing something else tonight, which it sounds like we're doing. We're going to vote on something tonight, one way or the other, and then we'll have to move forward, and hoping, hoping that we will get this taken care of tonight, so we can have our transportation for our kids come day one of school, and if we do that, I'm fine. If we don't, I'm, I'm going to say I'm not fine with it, and I'm, I'm okay with saying that. So that's for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. And just so we're clear, we have already decided that we're using ICOs. That's already been settled and discussed. So if there's no other discussion around this presentation, we really need to move- So if there's no other discussion around this presentation, we really need to move on to actually, as Mr. Alexander stated, to entertain a motion to take this item off the table for our consideration, to vote it up or down and then proceed on with the other alternatives should this board decide that it's not what they want. So, um, item 4.1 is, uh, Ms. Hall?
I just have one question. My apologies. Just a real quick question. Mr. Justin, when you had came up and spoke, I had asked if there was a deadline for the ICOs and you said no. Is, I'm receiving messages saying, an actual email from APS that the paperwork must be turned in by August 8th for ICOs. Is that correct?
So in years past, the deadline was in July. And we waived that this year because of obviously everything being up in the air. We moved, we waived that July deadline. We made it August 8th because we need at least one week prior to route pick, which is next Thursday.
August 15th.
Correct. So that we know how many we actually have that are gonna be there at route pick and how many are able to choose routes on that day.
Okay, no, that's why I had asked earlier, was there a deadline? You said no. And then it's.
Correct. We're still, we're still taking applications. We're still taking paperwork after that. But in order for them to be able to be there on the 15th to pick a route that day, it needs to be in by the 8th.
Okay. And then one last question, President, I'm sorry. Just for all clarity, for me, one option is just having ICOs. Second option is Templeton. Third option is ICOs and Templeton. Or it would be ICOs and the two other companies that we used before, that was like 7.5 million. So it's like four options on the table. Is this correct?
No, it's just ICOs and a vendor.
Ms. Hall?
I'm just going off of what's being presented. And, I mean, we just had a slideshow that had the other companies that we used this past year right there. So I guess I'm confused. If we're not using these options here, why present them? Because it's making it confusing. It's making it look like four different options. So I don't know. Maybe you can help me. I don't.
We are not in a predicament where we can only use strictly ICOs. That just simply can't happen. If it could, I personally don't have an issue with it. But we don't have enough in order to just use ICOs. Prior, I guess to my, before I became the superintendent here, this is when this was done to bring in two additional companies because there weren't enough ICOs at that time, but I was not here. I'm only, I can only speak for, since I've been here. Based on what we have right now, we would not be able to open the doors of school adequately with just what we have. We, so we would need to have an extra company, someone that would help supplement in the, and fill in the gaps of where our ICOs are not able to do all of the routes. We've actually put out an ad asking for more ICOs. So we're trying to fill as much as we can, but even they wouldn't be ready to open the doors of the school year. I mean, it, it might be shortly thereafter, after we get them processed and, and all the things that they have to go through, just to make sure that they're ready. So, and, and if we can get more ICOs, we're certainly happy to work with them. Number one, this administration has never, and I'm gonna speak for me because I am the superintendent, I have never, ever not wanted ICOs to have work. Never. I, I don't, I don't have a problem with working with our ICOs and a company if that's what we have to do. If we had enough ICOs, we wouldn't need a supplemental company. But right now, we don't have enough. So if it's not the pleasure of the board to use Templeton, that's fine with me. Reject it? I mean, bring it back on the table if that's what the proper thing is to do, because I'm not a scholar at Robert's Rules of Order. So if that's the, if that's what we are supposed to do, bring it back up, reject it, decline it, whatever, and then reject all bids. And then my option would be to ask, could we extend what we were currently using for this school year? And we will begin a whole new RFP process for the 25, 26 school year, but it's actually gonna be done this fall. I would hope, it is my desire, that by December, no later than January, we would be able to put out a new RFP, if not have it done and back by then. The sooner the better for me because then we could plan for transportation for the following year. But I've never not wanted our ICOs to have employment. Certainly, if that is the communication that has been eloquently put out there, that is not our desire. Whether they are working independently with us or whether they're working with a company, I just want to make sure that they have employment. But we also have to make sure that we are looking at what we're doing fiscally and we want to make sure that we're ready to open the doors for these kids on the first day. That's strictly what my desire is.
Okay. No, I just wanted to understand all the different choices. I never said you were against ICOs. It was just all the different topics, all the different presentations, all the different chatter, all the different presentations.
It all begins to run together, I understand.
Everything is a lot. So we just want to make sure that we're doing, well, me, I'm voting for the correct thing to do for our children. Because they're the ones that's affected. So thank you.
Thank you. I need to have one final clarification on those 112 ICOs. Are all of those, I guess, not full-time, but are any of those substitute drivers? Because I know they might not have the full availability as well.
Yeah, of the 112, we have five that have listed, that told us that they're sub-only for other drivers.
Okay.
Of the 112, there's five that have said that they only want to sub for other drivers, that they were not interested in selecting a full route.
Thank you.
I don't know.
So to my colleagues, um, item 4.1 is to bring this item back to the table. And then at that point, we can vote whether we would like to go with that or not. So we will entertain a motion to bring this item back to the table.
I, I move to de-table item 4.1 and bring it back to the table.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Alexander. And it's my understanding, in the case of re-tableing an item, there is no discussion. So we will do roll call.
Madam, Madam Chair, could you tell me where you find that?
I was advised by our legal that when you're re-tableing or bringing a motion or an item back from the table, there is no need for a discussion about bringing it back to the table.
Madam Chair, may I ask the attorney to reference that part of the Ohio Revised Code? Or what are we talking, Ohio Revised Code?
It is not Ohio Revised Code. This would be Robert's Rules of Order, which are.
So we're gonna follow Robert's Rules of Order now? Okay.
Yeah, but we don't have to. I mean, it's, the board isn't necessarily compelled by law to follow them, but procedurally, it has been the version that they've adopted for orderly meetings. If we don't follow them, it doesn't invalidate any action as illegal, but if we want to follow them, the discussion would not be proper at this time.
Thank you. Thank you very much for making that clear, Madam Chair. As we are not following the rules as it relates to reconsideration, so I would ask that we have discussion on this item.
Is there a discussion about bringing this item back to the table?
Madam Chair, I have discussion. Madam Chair, I would just ask for Member Perry to explain why you would want to de-table this item. May I?
Because I think it's worthy of a discussion. I think we cannot let it sit and just not do something. We gotta make a decision.
So you do want us to have a discussion?
I do. We should.
So we should.
We've had a discussion for, for weeks now, so let's continue.
Is there any other discussion?
Yes. So now, why is it, I'm, I'm asking, I'm not understanding, so this resolution is to reject the proposal?
No, this is to put it back on the table and then there will be, we will entertain another motion to either reject it or accept it. But it has to be on the table in order for us to do that. So what's before us now is to put it back.
Madam Chair, I contend that it doesn't have to be on the table because it was out of order in the first place. So it should not have ever been on the agenda. But if we're gonna bring it back to reject it, then I'll go with that because my, my intent is to reject.
So it's moved, it's seconded. Roll call, please, Mr., Dr. Thompson.
So ju- just for point of clarification, we're voting to, just to bring it back for an item of discussion again, correct? Is that, is that correct? Is that, okay. Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
This is just to discuss it, right?
That's correct. It's not to prove it. Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Autry?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you so much. Now we will entertain a motion to adopt Templeton Transportation. Is there a motion to adopt Templeton Transportation?
So move.
It's been moved by Mr. Alexander. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Perry. Is there any further discussion?
I have some.
Mr. Perry?
So when we say adopt, I want to be clear again, we're, we're using this as a, as a supplement, right? ICOs are still on the table. It's not gonna change.
Right, for one year.
One-year supplement with Templeton.
Yes.
And if more ICOs apply than the 112 we say we currently have, let's say 50 more apply and we get to 160 or 170, that'd be enough ICOs in theory, right? Without using Templeton.
If they, if they accept the kids that continue to come out through the school year.
Okay, so ICOs apply. If there's more, apply.
They have.
Keep applying then.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, just for clarification, Madam Chair, so could you, could the parliamentarian, could you please read what we're voting on here? What is the number that we're voting on?
4.1.
Would you read that, please?
So my interpretation of this is that we are voting on 4.1 to adopt the.
Madam, Madam, could you, Madam Chair, my request is, could you read the actual language of the, of the resolution or of the clause that we are asked to vote on? Could you please read it as a parliamentarian, please?
It reads, "I wish to recommend entering into a service agreement to provide transportation services to and from school on a daily basis for APS students who require transportation-related services as assigned as part of their individual education plan, or eligible students, participants declared homeless under the Federal McKinney-Vento Act. Students assigned foster care status in various youth groups with Templeton Transportation LLC who provided the lowest, most responsible, responsive bid effective August 6, 2024, through June 2025 at the per diem, per student expenditure rate of $27.86, which is determined by the actual service needs of the assigned students as instructed by APS, Special Education Department, and Project Rise to be charged to fund 001-0000 general fund."
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Is there any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Member Sykes.
So as I've said before, we have rejected this, we have rejected Templeton Transportation. I will continue to vote to reject this proposal. It has been rejected. We have no idea how many drivers this company has. This company has absolutely no record of having been in business. We have absolutely no clarification on how many drivers this, this company has. The superintendent indicated that there was a minimum of 10 vehicles. We don't know if this company, this person, has been a supervisor, a manager, or owner before, but since this is the very first, as I understand, contract that this company would hold, there is nothing to say that this company is more qualified to handle this than any of the ICOs out there. And so for that reason, and which is the same reason why I voted against it when it was brought before this board before, I will be voting no on this. I think it is irresponsible for this board to do this. And I say, as I said before, I think that the way that the RFP has been handled, that it puts us in a situation whereby the other vendors will find themselves in a situation where they have some questions and they have some concerns that will go beyond this. And I also say that this is not representative of what the community want us to do in handling the business here. So I will be voting no on this proposal.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Mr. Alexander?
If, if, if something happens that Templeton can't provide the service, we can go to the other two, other two companies, is that correct?
I believe that. The recruitment and hiring of ICOs is ongoing.
Okay, so, let me back, let me rephrase my question. If we get enough ICOs, we won't need to have any other company. But if we don't get ICOs, we need another company. So what we need to do right now is have a company there available just in case we, we, we need someone else. But if we don't, we don't have to use them. Is that correct?
Yeah.
That's why I'm.
No, if, if we have enough ICOs, that we don't need a vendor, then we don't need to use the company, correct?
Exactly. That's, that's what I'm saying. So we, we're just saying that Templeton, or whomever the company would be, would be there just for the overflow only.
This is correct.
Well, I, I didn't want to say the name because you didn't want us to say the name. So I'm saying other, other vendor. Okay, so.
And as of right now, we don't have enough.
Okay.
Is there any other discussion? Ms. Hall?
Just one, thank you, Madam President. Just one more question. So at our last meeting, this seems to be kind of the same verbiage as before. But if we're talking about ICOs and using Templeton, how come in this new verbiage of unfinished business, we don't have ICOs and Templeton? I think that's why I questioned it last time, was because it only says Templeton. So if we vote yes, technically, we're just stating, and I understand what we're saying, there'll be a supplement and they'll work together, but me voting yes is, I'm only reading Templeton. I'm not reading ICOs and Templeton.
We already voted for the ICOs at the last meeting. We already voted for the ICOs as well as other modes of transportation, yellow cab, metro. We already voted for that.
Because this was the same verbiage as before when we said no for the Templeton, but we voted yes for everyone else. So we're back here with the same verbiage as we voted no for last time we were here, but it doesn't say ICOs and Templeton. It just says Templeton. So if we say yes, we're gonna vote for 4.1, then it's like we're saying we're just using Templeton. And then everybody else will fall in line. That's just how I'm reading it.
But we already voted for the ICOs. That was already voted to use them.
So does this then mean that Templeton can get the bulk of the students and then ICOs, yellow cab, whoever else will get, who Templeton cannot handle?
That's my understanding.
So then Templeton will be the primary.
The supplement.
Templeton is gonna, if, if the board chose to do what, do that company, even if you, even if you, I don't even know. I'm confused.
That, that's how, that's how we feel because.
Even if you reject it.
Please be respectful. We're trying to make sure we make.
Even if, even if the board voted it down for Templeton and you decided to end, vote to end all bids, the, the whole RFP process, the recommendation that I would be asking is, could we go back for just this year to use the, extend the companies that we were already using?
And that was like 7.5 million, which is, right?
7.1.
Yes, 7.1.
That's 7.1.
Anticipate it, but we don't know. We may have more ICOs.
Just, just so I, I won't ask any more questions. I just want to be clear. So if we vote yes for 4.1, the ICOs will be first to get the jobs, the routes? And then Templeton will get whatever the difference of 32 drivers that the ICOs don't have?
That is, that is correct. The ICOs are the first priority. They will get the, the first.
They will get the, the first routes.
Okay, and then Templeton will be a supplement.
And then whatever is left that needs to be done, is done by, whether it's Templeton, or if, if we're able to go back to and extend what we already had, then those, just like we were doing this year. So, but it's important for us to have a, an, a supplemental company, or, or the two companies that we were using, because we don't have enough ICOs.
No, I understand all that, but when I'm reading this, we're just talking about Templeton. Templeton, Templeton, they're going, they're the most responsive.
Well, that's the resolution, so...
Right, I just wanna make sure that the ICOs will get the routes first, and then Templeton will take whatever we don't, we can't fulfill. And yellow cab, or whoever else.
If it's Templeton, or if it's the, the other company, the two companies that we were using, if we extend them, then we would use them just for this year and do a whole nother RFP.
Okay, 'cause I think the companies we did before was a lot of, that's a lot of money. That's 7.15, however, million.
It is.
That's a lot, and we're asking for a levy. So if we're gonna do this, then I personally would say ICOs, and then whatever can't be fulfilled, then we'll use other companies to fulfill it. So that's what, okay.
That is what it is going to be.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion?
Madam Chair, just, just, so, are we saying that when Templeton proposal came in, that it indicated that they expected the school system to hire IPOs in order to work for them? Was that part of the contract?
Yes.
Is that what we were hearing?
Thank you, Mr. Sir.
Why are we hiring independent contractors for Templeton?
The, the, RFP was written with no volume, no number of students. The only requirement was that the proposer had 10 vehicles, or access to 10 vehicles, because we didn't know, when we wrote the proposal, we had, we weren't looking to replace the ICOs. I gave the volume of the existing two vendors as, as strictly as reference. I said, we're not, we don't know what the volume is. Here's what the two current outside vendors are providing, the rest of it is being provided by ICO. So there's no guaranteed minimum for Templeton, there was no, there was no number of routes at all, just again, they needed to have 10 vehicles.
Madam President, that's why I started by saying that perhaps it's part of the system, and the way we're writing our requests for proposals, because it leaves so many things up in the air, that an individual, that a company can come in with $27.86, which is less than the, all the other people that's already doing the business. So it seems as if they would know what it costs to actually provide this service, and that it would be more than $27.86 to do the business. And if we are doing this, then what's gonna happen a few months from now, when they find that they can't do this business, provide this service for $27.86?
She, she is a current provider, she has Cogge Falls, I believe, Canton City, she has Canton Cities.
She is a van driver. Is that what I hear?
Yes.
She's not a supervisor, she's not a manager, she doesn't own.
When, when, when she was brought in as the lowest, most responsible, responsive bid, in the very beginning, she is currently providing service with her company for Canton City schools. She is also, she originally, when she, she was an ICO here years ago, when she left here, she went there and ran van transport for Canton City schools, then formed her own company, and she's now currently supplementing for Canton City schools for whatever their small number of ICOs can't accommodate.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please, Dr. Thompson?
And for, again, point of clarification, for the record, this is a vote to approve Templeton Transportation LLC as a vendor, and we already read what the language states.
Supplement, yeah, supplement.
I'm, I'm just reading you what the language said.
It does not say supplement.
According to the superintendent, we are talking about a supplemental vendor. We're correct.
It's, yeah, it's not in here.
My, not to make a complicated discussion, any less complicated, hopefully this would make it less complicated, if I could, Madam President, just ask a question of Ms. Vidal. If the board took no action at all, none, would it not revert back to past practice?
We have an open RFP process that needs to be resolved, and they just put something on, we just removed something from the table that we now have to address.
Okay.
And then, and I'll just end it there.
Okay, understood.
Let's make sure we vote. This is so doggone confusing, it doesn't make sense. Can you read that again, what we're voting for, Dr. Thompson, that way it'll be easier, so we all know what we're voting for? Because some are saying it's a, oh, heck, I can't even get my words right now. It's the contract, a vendor that's open vendor, some are saying it's a supplement, is it a supplement as a regular? Because you can use a open vendor to take on supplement, as well as a, a full load. So can we make sure we, do we know what we're voting on?
Current language says, "recommendation entering into a service agreement to provide transportation services to and from school on a daily basis for APS students who require transportation-related services as assigned as part of their individual education plan, i.e. P. Or eligible student participants declared homeless under the Federal McKinney-Vento Act. Students assigned foster care status or various youth programs with Templeton Transportation Services LLC, who provided the lowest, most responsible, responsive bid effective August 6, 2024 through June 30, 2025 at a per diem rate, student expenditure rate of $27.86, which is determined by the actual service needs of the assigned students as instructed by the APS Special Education Department and Project Rise to be charged to fund 001-0000 General Fund." The language here would indicate approval of Transportation Services LLC service contract. So that is what you are voting on.
So...
Thank you.
Can we amend the language to be clear on what we're voting on then? I mean, I, I don't wanna vote on something we don't intend to vote on. Shouldn't we amend the language to make it reflect what we wanted to say?
Do you have a motion to...
I, I move to put the language in there that this is a supplemental contract only, for whatever the ICOs cannot handle, some language to that effect. To use Templeton as a supplemental company to handle the overflow, if you will.
So is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Member Hall. Is there discussion on that secondary motion?
Madam Chair, I would just ask that, with this language, and I agree with this language, that it would be a supplement proposal only, and that the administration understands that it is a supplement proposal only after it is determined that the independent contractors cannot handle the additional work.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call on this motion to add that language, that is supplemental vendor.
Quickly, this language that I just wrote would read, "wish to recommend entering into a service agreement to provide transportation services in a supplement, as a supplemental company, to students un, who are unable to be serviced by current IOCs," and then the rest of the language.
ICOs.
Oh, I'm sorry, ICOs. I was changing, you guys, there you go, ICO, sorry. ICOs. Does that make sense? I think that addresses the question at hand. Are you comfortable with that, Dr. Robinson?
Yes.
Okay.
So before us is the recommendation to make that change in the language. If there's no discussion on that, roll call, please, Dr. Thompson.
You better hurry up.
This is just to change the language. This is just to change the language.
Mrs. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Miss, Ms. Hall?
Yes.
And Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. So now before us, we will entertain a motion to accept this amended language in this, for this contract. Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Alexander. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Perry. Is there any discussion?
So your, your statement was, we're accepting, we're now voting to accept the amended language. We're actually voting on the resolution now, though, right?
We're voting on the resolution with the amended language, to be clear.
Yep.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please, Dr. Thompson?
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. And so, because of that vote, there is no need to consider the items contained under new business as they were alternatives to item 4.1. So at this time, we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Alexander, seconded by Ms. Hall. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please, Dr. Thompson?
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned at 5:51.